All right, we'll call this meeting to order. We'd like to welcome everybody to the Harriman City Council Meeting. It's August the 2nd, 2016. We'll start our meeting with a prayer by Councilman Wright and follow that by pledging to the flag. Councilman Wright, will you oblige?
Please, you join me, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for another opportunity to allow us to meet and to conduct the business of our people for the city of Harriman. Father, we ask that you be with us as we enter into a new fiscal year and as we bring new leadership onboard in the council in the days to come. We pray that they, as well as the rest of us, would look to you for your guidance and may the things that we do be pleasing to you. In Christ's name and prayer.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Here. 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 Included in everybody's packet is a copy of the minutes from the July 12th meeting. Is there a motion to approve those? Motion by Councilman Bass, second. Second by Councilman Holly. Councilman Bass. Councilman Holly. Floor is open for anyone that has any discussion, corrections, or amendments. Call the roll, please.
Ms. Ayer?
Yes.
Wayne Bass?
Yes.
Eddie Holly?
Yes.
Ken Yen-Mei?
Yes.
Ed Martin?
Yes.
The motion to approve the salaries. Motion by Councilman Ayler, second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Martin. Councilman Ayler.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Martin.
Motion.
Floor is open for questions or discussion. You might know why we do this. Don't we approve these on the budget? I mean, we've been doing it, I think, since the beginning of time.
Yeah, originally it was in a charter. I don't know if it's still there or not, but if you will approve bills on one meeting and payroll on the next one.
This one took me nine years.
I haven't read the language lately, so I don't know if it survived, but it used to be in a charter.
There's a motion in the second. Any more discussion? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Ayer?
Yes.
Wayne Bass?
Yes.
Eddie Holly?
Yes.
Ken Yen-Mei?
Yes.
Ed Martin?
Yes.
Monty Rock?
This time in the delegations from the audience, I'm sorry, Lottie. Anyone who would like to address council, you may do so at this time.
Yes, Floyd Lawson here. It's that time of year again for the back of the school bash. Back of the school bash coming up August 7th, this coming Sunday at the Riverfront Park here in the beautiful city of Harriman, Tennessee. On tap we have from musical guests, Mr. Joey Pierce with his singing partner, Mr. Sidney Stinnick. From down Rome State Way, we got the Jazz Cats in Harriman's own, Mr. Jack Prophet. People want that adrenaline rush, we got a four-man bungee jump, photo mat, and we got a lot of prizes and gifts to give away to the young folks. In the past, you guys have sponsored us with $500. I do have a budget prepared to give to your treasurer, as always. I spoke to your acting police chief, and I did give it to fire department. I'll do that again this coming Wednesday. So, what do you say?
There are motions to... I think we actually budgeted this, don't we, Dr. Curly?
Well, we do it a sundry fine.
There are motions to approve the $500 contribution. There are a motion by Councilman Holly, he's our second. Second by Councilman Bass. Councilman Holly. Councilman Bass.
I'll make a good point. I thank a lot of our kids here in Harriman. I appreciate you too.
Thank you.
Floor is open. So long as it's good with the police and the fire, and it passes this, we just want to, you know, we just want to, it's not the city of Harriman's bash, but it's one that you've always done.
That's correct.
Call the roll, please.
Ms. Ayer?
Yes.
Wayne Bass?
Yes.
Eddie Holly?
Yes.
Ken Yen-Mei?
Yes.
Ed Martin?
Yes.
Monty Rock?
Thank you. Thank you. Still on the delegations, if anyone would like to address council.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor of Council, my name is Patrick Henry. I'm an attorney in Kingston, Tennessee. And I've recently submitted my qualification packet for the position of city judge. I'd appreciate your consideration when it comes to a vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Mayor and City Council, I'm Tom Coleman from the Cornstalk Heights School. And first of all, I wanted to thank everybody that showed up to meet the candidates forum that we had on Sunday. We got around the rain and got everybody underneath, but it turned out to be a good event. And we had two of the three mayor candidates that are here, you know, between Ken and Wayne. And then Lonnie was there. And Lonnie, too, and the other people that are in attendance tonight. And then also Buddy was there. So, thank you very much. And thank you for the police chief for making sure that we had some police coverage down there, so it worked out great. One of the things that did come up that was very important, and it's important to our community, our organization, and I think the rest of the community, is the Temperance Building. It's the number-one historical landmark in this city, and nothing's been done that we can see. And as an historical group, we want to see that project be kept into gear and something happening so that the citizens can see what's going on. So, and we do have volunteers from our own group that would like to get involved. So, if there's something that we can have, you guys address on that, that would be wonderful. And then the last one was the beautified Harriman was another thing that came up. And when we're driving down the Rome Street, we're seeing all these dead bushes and dead flowers in our pots down the main street of Rome County, of Harriman. You go into the city of Rockwood, they've got nice, beautiful flowers planted over their streets and on the side streets. And I'm not sure what's going on there, and just I have to address those issues. So, thank you very much.
Thanks for doing what you all do. You know, it's interesting, I think that this administration has probably put more money into the Temperance Building than any other administration. And when I first got elected, we were using that building quite regularly. And it seems like when we started spending money on it is when it got closed down. It's had a new roof on it, it's had some new stuff inside, it's had some heating and air stuff that's been done to it. I think about $60,000 worth of structural support. And they still tell us we can't go in, so I agree with you. I think it's about a million-dollar project, but I think it'll have to be done phases over the next ten years or whatever. And of course, Mike knows more, but, but two, it needs to be used daily.
Right. And we saw it as a way to really make revenue for the city. I mean, it can be done and used in a way that could really increase some extra revenue that would totally renovate it and people would be able to use it.
Yeah. Agree. Still on the delegations. Now move on to old business. Councilman Wright?
Yes, Mayor. Have we made any headway on the meet with Tom Cass?
Yes, I made contact with Russell, and he has already retired. But he promised me that he would get, I told him that you wanted a meeting, he told me he would get you and I meeting before this month's up, so. But he is retired, and, but he's working three days a week on a contract basis, I believe.
And second thing, Ken, our homepage, our internet site, where do we stand?
They're still working on getting stuff moved over, which we actually today, the old URL we had with local government, lego-cityharriman.org, we just got that switched over, so now it will redirect people to our current site, which is .net. But I'm still working, talking with them, getting everything switched over to the new one. It's still just a process.
That's all.
Councilman Martin?
There was somebody complaining to me the other day that the use of property in the city of Harriman is such that if somebody parks a bunch of junk cars on their lawn, it devalues the property on both sides of it. I'd like to see us do something that kind of educates the public as to what they do with their property, of course, is their business, but they should be responsible enough to not do it in such a manner as to devalue the property of their neighbors. So, we need to look into that. I think that's been a home-going problem for years.
I agree. Anything else?
That's all.
Councilman Ayler?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Bass?
Just one thing, just to iterate on kind of what Ken had talked about and kind of what Tom had talked about. We've discussed many times here about dilapidated buildings and structures, that's probably understandable. And I live around Harriman, of course, right around there, but it seems like they're multiplying instead of hip and galling. Are we working on getting those things out of here, I would ask. Should I ask for the minutes? Do we send in letters to those homeowners to try to, those houses cleaned up, that's fine?
We are. Josh will be here next week to give you the report. Generally, his schedule is to be at the second council meeting each month, give a report on the number of letters that have gone out, the number of cases that's come for the judge, the number of excuses that have been presented.
Councilman Minion?
Yeah, we've been talking with the Temperance Building, as he just brought up. If I'm not mistaken, they're way up 125-years-old this month, that the Temperance Building. So, what I'm gonna try to do, I know I'll be a little late to put something together in August, but throw something in the rate for Harriman that could point it out, it's 125-year-old building. I might be off a year or so.
Oh, see, I thought it was 26.
I think it is 25. I don't remember, I feel like I looked at it last year, and I was like, oh, that's interesting, and then, but we could do something with that.
Oh, wait, one more thing. I've sent out the board, and it talks about compensation of mayor and councilmen. So, if you all would have any comments, get them back to me. Kevin put this together for us, and then didn't want anything to change. I've looked up the other cities, so we can, whenever we bring this up, whatever, next week or whatever, we can, I've got the, I can tell you what the rates of other cities and counties got, if anybody's got any questions. Or I can email it out, but...
That happened to pass twice.
Yeah.
We put that on message agenda, and then also on the special call meeting agenda, so we can pass it twice, and the new council won't have to deal with it. He's referring to council pay. Council pay right now is just $8?
Eight-five.
Eight-five a month, and I think my answer...
175.
175 a month.
And by the way, it's been 60-years since that's been increased.
Yeah, that's what it was. That wasn't, it wasn't bad pay back then. Councilman Holly? Old business, Dr. Curly?
No, no, I missed it, not.
Old business, Allison?
No.
Any old business, Kevin? Move on to the Department of Reports, everyone that's got a handout from the fire department. Do you have anything else, Chief?
No, no, sir, not at all.
Police Department, Kenny, do you have anything?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, just on behalf of the Harriman officers that attended yesterday's event at the Rome County College over there, we just wanted to say thank you to all the community members that showed up to show support. It was very moving and touching to us to see all different aspects of the community come together and be united, and I was very touched by that. I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming. We had a good showing, yeah. If you missed it, you missed it, because it was something to see. Rebecca?
I just have a few things. Just update from the cobbler festival that we had, I think almost two weeks ago. Went, it was very successful, especially considering it was our first year, and it poured on us. We sold 357 tickets in total, and I was really expecting to come out in the red, and we actually made a little bit of profit on it, so that'll go into more, more events for the future and kind of make it easier for me to advertise them in advance, which is really why we planned to do that. And our winners were Amanda Bane with Impact Church won best overall, Diana Knoblock won most creative with her tomato cobbler. I think props to Kenny for giving that idea. And Sweet Teas, Tara and Timberley won the people's choice. And we have our last cruise of the year coming up next weekend. We're actually gonna do it in the morning, which will be a new thing. We'll see kind of how that goes over. It'll be 8:00 a.m. to noon, so hopefully it won't be as hot. And then, of course, we have the Ray for Harriman coming up. It'll be on September 5th, Labor Day. There's still vendor applications available online. Deadline is approaching, in probably like next week or two, I'm gonna start cutting that off. That's about all I've got for now.
Heard a lot of stuff about the cobbler festival. Go figure. I never would've thought that, but it was a huge success. New business, Dr. Curly?
No, not tonight.
Allison, new business?
No.
Kevin?
Just two things that I wanted to update you on. First, you should have a printout that I sent around as the meeting was beginning that gives you an update as to the paving project as of the end of the day on Monday, so as of yesterday. This is where we stood. If you've been around downtown, you've probably seen that they have a good building of the downtown area. Once that particular part of the process is complete and we're able to do the paving in the central business district, Cornstalk Heights area, we should have a much better idea at that point where we'll stand from the standpoint of the remaining budget and the amount of paving that needs to be done. But just to give you an idea, right now, we've spent roughly 48 percent of the total budget that's been allocated for the project. Also, I wanted to let you know, there have been some questions about the shadow of the car garage fridge project. I checked T-DOT. There was a power line that was going to have to be relocated that they did not initially think was going to interfere with the construction process, but it is. And so, prior to HUB being able to relocate that power line, they have to get permission from the railroad, which includes an application process for approval. And that's pretty much where it's been for several weeks now. HUB is prepared to do the work as soon as the railroad approves it, and estimates it should take no more than two days for them to do that. At that point, it would be where the contractor could come in and actually start the construction work.
Kevin, did you get that email from me about the citizen that had a question over there?
I did, yes, sir. Back about the time that we had the initial kickoff meeting with T-DOT, I had provided you copies, or they came into the office and looked at the plans for the project, and then also gave them copies of the portions of the plans particularly related to their property. It's a little confusing for them, because back when all of the right-of-way was purchased in various seasons and so forth were purchased, they were not the property owner. They have since purchased the property from the person who dealt directly with the state. So, all of those items carried over once they purchased the property.
What is this doing through our G-BUS?
At this point, no one has referenced any extensions. I, just based upon the tone of the initial kickoff meeting, really with respect to the railroad's involvement and processes that were going to require everybody involved, I had doubts from the very beginning that June is gonna be a deadline, that they would end up meeting. I think the contractor committed, I think T-DOT committed, but I think the railroad is gonna be what's gonna influence the cause of the, probably eventually have to get some extensions and pushing on. But at this point, that's just my opinion.
Yeah, and just for clarification, that's a state, essentially, that's a state project where the state is funding better than 80 percent of it. And although the right-of-ways and houses that are purchased and that type stuff that's gone on over the last 15 years shows that it's in the city of Harriman's name, it's not, it did not come before us, and it didn't come out of our pocket to buy these houses. Some people are confused about that, and I can understand it, but the state of Tennessee serves, they serve as an agent for us, so they're doing all this and then putting it in our name and paying for it with the construction money. But it's confusing, because if you have issues with it, we can, we can maybe help you a little bit, but it's kind of hard, because we're kind of on the outside looking in, although it appears from the outside looking in that we are on the inside, in fact. Anything else?
Yes.
Any more questions for Kevin? Now move on to any committee reports. Move on to the agenda, discuss and approve, discuss and possibly approve automatic aid agreement with the city of Kingston and the city of Harriman. This is a, an agreement that goes above and beyond our mutual aid agreement for fire with the city of Kingston. And we've made several changes, passed it back and forth, attorneys have looked at it, and now it's back in front of you again. I think it's hot off the press as of last week, maybe a couple of weeks ago. There are motions to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Martin, second. Second, Councilman Holly. Councilman Martin?
This is the agreement whereby, with automatic aid or with the mutual aid, the one fire department has to be on the scene and determine that they are ill-equipped to handle the volume of fires, so at that point, they request additional aid from adjoining departments. With this agreement, when the call goes out, it goes to both departments. Both departments begin to respond. If the first department on the scene determines they can handle it, they call the other department off.
Correct. The only, the only thing I'll add to what you said that is correct, with the exception of a, that this is only on structure fire. So, on all, only when a building is burning is when this agreement will take effect.
And who put this on the agenda?
I did.
Okay. Now, I sent the fire department still, then Curly?
Yes, sir.
The fire chief and myself met with the fire chief and the city manager in Kingston. We reviewed the document. Assistant Chief Daniel says the department is in support of it. I have no objections to it, and the city of Kingston is already passed the agreement, so if you choose to pass it this evening, the mayor will be able to sign it and, depending on the matter of days.
I had a couple of questions about it today, and I went down there with the fire department. You know, I was, I'm leery about the overtime that it could potentially cause, but in saying that, I mean, it's an agreement that we can accept and move forward, because the fire department means it's good for the city. The more people you have, the better off you are. And it is a, you know, if it's not working, and we're spending a lot of money that we have, then we can get out of agreement. I don't think it's something that binds us up forever.
What's the term of the agreement?
It needs to be August 1st to September 3rd.
Says April 2015 to March 31st, 2016.
I think that's probably an oversight from their earlier draft. They just didn't update the dates, and I'm sure that can be...
So, what is?
Corrected.
August, August the, August the 3rd, 2016 through August 31st, 2017. Is that okay?
And then, based upon our experiences, we could either approve it again or...
You'll also notice that the sentence following that also gives us a 30-day cancellation notice if it's used against during the year. I would also point out, when you look at the data, Harriman has about twice as many structure fires per year as the city of Kingston, so they will probably be responding to us more than we're going to.
Let me clarify, one question that Wayne said on overtime. The only time, it's very rare that this would ever affect overtime, because if they roll and keep going and get, actually get to the structure fire in Kingston, if it's at that point, it would be a mutual aid call anyway.
The only thing is, is if the call comes in at, say, 10 o'clock tonight, and you get the call, and you start rolling the truck, you automatically gotta start rolling people in to cover your city. That's where I was concerned about.
I see what you're saying, I see what you're saying.
Who's coming in to cover the area? Did you say August 3rd or August 4th? They're trying to answer us right now.
Right.
As far as what it was.
August, I just said August 3rd, 2016 through August 31st, 2017.
If it's on the year, would you go on the 2nd? Would you read that, be on the 2nd if it's on your...
I was just trying to get, I was just trying to get to the, okay, I mean, that doesn't matter. You gonna do August 2nd, 2017? If we come to an agreement on that, I'll make an amendment. You make an amendment, make an amendment, or...
I will. To change the dates from August, well, up top, August 3rd, 2016, and then down under the terms from August 3rd, 2016 through August 2nd, 2017.
Motion on forward to make an amendment to this agreement. Second.
Second.
Second by Councilman, there's a motion by Councilman Me, second by Councilman Wright. Back to you, Councilman Lee. Councilman Wright?
Motion.
Floor is open for question or discussion on this amendment. Only voting on the amendment for the effective date for August the 2nd, 2016 to August, August the 3rd, 2016 to August 2nd, 2017, is what we're voting on. All in favor of this amendment, vote with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilman, Councilman?
The only question I would have is, has Kingston already approved?
Yes.
They have already approved.
Okay.
Then they'll have to amend their agreement to match hours. As far as the dates are concerned.
Yep. They'll have to extend those, yeah. Is there any more discussion? I think it's worth a try, and I think it could possibly save a life, which is, what we do first and foremost is safety, so I think it's, I think it's great. Especially with, again, everybody coming together and working together. I think it's great. Any more discussion? Call the roll.
Ms. Ayer?
Yes.
Wayne Bass?
Yes.
Eddie Holly?
Yes.
Ken Yen-Mei?
Yes.
Ed Martin?
Yes.
Monty Rock?
Yes.
Next item, discuss and approve the use of TVA image funds for park repairs. This comes back to a year or so ago, when we all voted on how to use some of the extra money that we were awarded. And Kevin has a presentation or a, for some of it.
You should have a, this page in your packet tonight. It outlines what we're proposing to do, what's planning, council that approved $25,000 to do repair and maintenance on items at the various parts of the city. So, we've kind of broken this into three sections, so that you can see the entire picture of what we're proposing to do. The top portion is what we're asking you to approve this evening, which would be the work that would be done using the TVA image funds, and comes to a total of just under $25,000. The second section, just general maintenance items that we also plan to do, and we take from the routine budget, Parks and Recreation Department has each year. And then the third section are not necessarily items that we have proposed as part of this There, there is at least one of those items that you do have under consideration with regard to the budget. When it comes up for discussion next week, we also have another program that we believe maybe it will be funded through donations in that third section as well. But tonight, basically what we're doing is asking your approval to proceed with the first section, the handout that you see there. And I would just like to point out that because a number of the items that are damaged are no longer available, either the designs have become outdated, or in the case of a lot of the equipment that we have in parks, the company that actually manufactured it is no longer in business, this was not a, as simple a solution as get a part number, contact the company, and request a replacement part for that particular activity. We had to look at other options to try and offer the same type of activities, and also to try and ensure that the activities that we offer are accessible to everyone within our community, including those with limited ability to physically access some of the various components that were found within the playground.
Is there a motion to go ahead and approve the use of this money for Riverfront Park replacement? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yes, yes.
All, all of the parks?
It's all the parks, yes.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by councilman Mine, second by councilman Me, councilman Mine.
These things are needed, so we, we need to go ahead and, while we've got this extra money to take care of it.
Councilman Me.
I agree, long overdue.
Floor is open.
One thing, one thing I would like to ask about too, is the dock repairs at, at Riverfront. We have repaired that dock twice now, and erosion seems to be destroying our efforts. Is there any kind of plan in place to deal with the erosion problem we have there?
We had applied for some money through the county, in informal way, for riprap all the way down through there, and it was supposed to be paid for 100% with a grant. I learned last week that we, that nobody got approved for that money. So I, I don't, other than that, I don't know.
From what I understand, the current dock repair that he's talked to are planning on redoing them a different way, ripping those out and doing some things. I think he's talked to two. I know he said one of them is already talked about getting, making some way to make the water go away from that, which will help the erosion from, a lot of it's rainwater serving some of it, so. They're, they're also, as I understand it, planning on anchoring the footings deeper into the bank. But I, I think you are correct that the, probably what was an initial attempt to try and get the stormwater away from the landing where you access the stairs, at the top of the stairs to go down to the dock, did successfully take the water away from that location, but unfortunately it, it put that water on the supports of the stairwells. And so as a result, the erosion was much worse than what it normally would be, and was probably as much caused by just general stormwater runoff as it was the rising and falling river levels.
Kevin, how, how do we identify from that motion? And I, I'm sure it's this listing you've got up here at the top, but how, six months from now, how, how do you, how do you go back and identify? That that's the items we're talking about? It's on a page here, other things?
Can we just identify what was talking, repair items using TBA images?
Uh, yeah. The motion, the motion was for park repair, but, yeah.
The, the majority of the items on the list are pieces of equipment that would correlate to those manufactured by a different company, would have those catalogs. They're actually part of the NJPA purchasing alliance, so those contracts have already been bid and in place, and the prices you see are the contract prices, so we can purchase off of the contract without having to re-bid. For the majority of those items, you would be as tied at back to those particular items in the catalog, and of course, we'll have an invoice and file to reference as well.
Is this something that is approved tonight, or we're going to start on tomorrow?
We'll have to place the order. I'm not sure what the delivery time frame is for the various items.
But is that where we're going to start on now?
And, and I mean, I assume, I assume we'll have, we'll keep this list somewhere. Or six months from now, you know, repairs are being done. If someone had a question, we could look at some document and say, you know, here's, you see what I'm telling you?
We can, we can reference the invoices, or the billing invoices.
Right, and this is an Excel spreadsheet. It's on our computer, it's backed up.
I see, I see what councilman Wright's saying. Can we, can, can we start a file with, with just, you put the invoices and things in there, that way we can reference that file for whatever this repair is? I guess we'll be the way. Any more questions? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Sager?
Yes.
My best?
Yes.
Buddy Halling?
Yes.
Can you meet?
Yes.
Ken Minna?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Yes, that's good. Next item, discuss and possibly approve library appointments. Would be better worded if I said library reappointments. Library board asked if we would reappoint these now, rather than in September, like we're trying to hold off on doing some of the appointments for the new, new council members and mayor to come along, but they ask if we would go ahead and do these now, because they're needing them appointed so that they can have a meeting. I'm asking the council to reappoint the four following library board members, Mary Hickey, Mary Ann Soluski, Bill Alexander, and Gina Griffiths. They're all currently sitting members and have agreed to reset.
Motion. Second.
Motion by councilman Ayler, second by councilman Best. Councilman Ayler?
No, sir.
Councilman Best. The floor is open for question or discussion about these four people. And a call the roll, please.
Ms. Sager?
Yes.
My best?
Yes.
Buddy Halling?
Yes.
Can you meet?
Yes.
Ken Minna?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Yes.
Discuss and approve the final reading of ordinance 071601, an ordinance entitled to ordinance, amending the ordinance number 091501, being an ordinance to establish a budget for the city of Harriman, Tennessee for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2015, and ending June 30, 2016. And I yield the floor to Dr. Curley.
Yes, this is second reading. We had read the language of the ordinance at the last meeting. The only changes that were made were, we had some accounts payable that came in after that, and I had to go in and change a few line items. But it doesn't make any difference in balancing. We balance all the line items that were over with line items that were under, and therefore we have balances within the budget to cover the overages. If you'd like to read it again, I will.
Motion forward to go ahead and accept it without reading it for a second. Uh, by councilman Best, is there a second? Second by councilman Ayler. Councilman Best? Councilman Ayler?
No, sir.
Floor is open for discussion. Dr. Curley, I didn't know if you had anything else.
Oh, that's it.
Call the roll, please.
Ms. Sager?
Yes.
My best?
Yes.
Buddy Halling?
Yes.
Can you meet?
Yes.
Ken Minna?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Yes.
Next to last item, discuss and approve STBG funding. Yield the floor to Kevin.
Let me make one comment with reference to the Parks and Recreation before I move on. I did feel to mention that the Recreation Director has partnered with a local business, and there are a number of other things that he has planned, that that business is going to contribute products and labor towards in doing maintenance of the various park facilities. So one thing in particular, restoration of a number of benches at Riverfront Park, but that will be something he can provide you additional details on in the future. With regard to the STBG, funding, you have a application in your packet this evening that we're requesting you approve, the mayor to execute, submit to the city department of transportation. This is in relation to phase one of the, just over $500,000 that are referenced at our last meeting as being the transportation funding that will be provided to us by the federal government through T-DOT between now and fiscal year 2020. We had, we'd looked at Margrave Drive for this particular project. What we've decided to do at this point is to break the project into a couple of phases. So this first project would be the intersection of Margrave Drive and Mobile Highway, following Margrave down to the intersection with Carter, and then following Carter up to the intersection with Run Street. It could also involve a few upgrades along Mobile Highway towards the Dollar General Store as well. That's yet to be determined. We're also still working on the final numbers that will go into the budget. As I mentioned last month, the maximum, the city would be required to contribute to the project would be 20%. We feel like phase one will be well within the total amount of money that we have voted to us between now and fiscal year 2020. And once this part of the project is underway, then we can determine whether we want to give the mayor the funds that will have voted to us.
What do you need us to do?
Authorization for you to submit the document to T-DOT, which obligates our funding for this particular project. And there's a portion of the funding that we've got to have submitted by September, or we'll lose that funding.
Is there a motion to go ahead and go forward in, for with the STBG funding plan to work on portions of Margrave and Carter Street project? Motion by councilman Best, second by councilman Mine, and councilman Best. Councilman Mine. Floor is open.
What would you, what would you actually do at Margrave?
The, the description of the project, and we've tried to cover all possible alternatives. All of this may not end up being in the final project, but the majority of it definitely would be. There's milling, resurfacing, new signage that meets the standards that are required for signs today, new pavement markings, various traffic calming initiatives to be a part of the construction, to try and limit the excessive speeds on the road that could be an issue once the bridge is reopened. We will make repairs to the sidewalks, make sure that they are ADA compliant. If they are currently in existence along that route, we would not necessarily construct new sidewalks for those areas that do not currently have sidewalks. That would also, if there are existing sidewalks, add intersections, include handicap ramps that meet the current requirements, as well as traffic signal replacements and upgrades, and lighting along the route for pedestrians and/or vehicle or traffic as well.
Can any of those funds be used for paving?
Uh, that's what the milling and resurfacing is.
So we could... And is this just a, a one-time grant, or?
Generally, we receive about $78,000 per year.
You remember Iced Tea Money? That, that's what, that's the new name.
There is, there, did I hear you mention in that some plans for impeding speeding on that property? Because I know that is a concern of the residents on that street, that once that bridge is opened up, they will have a, a problem with speeding automobiles through there.
And that, that was added because of the concern that some of the residents expressed. Beyond that, pretty much everything that's included, except for maybe the pedestrian lighting, if we decide to include some pedestrian lighting. Those are the only two things that would not be required as part of the project by the T-DOT guidelines. So those are really the only two optional items that...
And was there any explanation as to why they would not? If part of the street down through there has sidewalks, why would they not put sidewalks in for the rest of the street? That doesn't make sense to me.
We, excuse me, we can choose to add sidewalks if we want to, we're just not required to. But we are required to upgrade any existing sidewalks that are adjacent to the project as we go through the area.
I think that portion of Carter Street's extremely important to go ahead and get paved. It's traveled a lot, and it leaves an impression on people going to and from our ball. It's the first thing they see, headed to our ball field, is the last thing they see. So when would that paving, when would we be expected to start paving that?
Um...
Spring?
I really don't know at this point. We'll have to, there's, there's a lot more that goes into these projects than like the paving project that we're doing, because...
We have to do engineering and all that stuff too, right?
That requires to do engineering, we have to get environmental clearance, and, you know, all those type of things that in a project like we're doing...
Is there a way that we can do it and get reimbursed? I mean, in other words, do it quicker and then get it reimbursed?
Not, not that I know of. Now, this is a small enough project that when it gets to, to the appropriate point, I would recommend to the city that we just contract directly with the engineering firm to represent us throughout the project, rather than a little margrave bridge project. We asked T-DOT to be our representative because of the size and scope of that project. But, but for this particular one, I would recommend getting a private firm. That should help the process move more quickly than having T-DOT do it for us.
Kevin, this sounds a lot like the project that we completed, I think, just before you came, on Walden Street and Morgan Street, which I think turned out incredibly well. I think everybody's very pleased with those results on that, which I believe is a billion-dollar project for, for both of those, so, yeah, I think we should absolutely do what we can to get money to approve the city.
It is very similar. It is the new form of the money that was available back then for those type of projects. This one will have a little bit more to focus on, paving that particular project, otherwise they're about the same.
Well, we used several different pots of money for that project, too. The T-21 money, and, you know, a different, lots of different types of money, make that happen.
Could you explain to me what the traffic calming things would be? The speed bumps, I wouldn't be for it. I mean, we, we're stops on the city, I guess we could switch to speed bump city, because everybody thinks their street is, you're speeding onto it. And so we start putting in speed bumps, everybody's going to want to speed.
I, I would not anticipate them being speed bumps. Generally, that is discouraged. There are other things that the engineers typically do.
They're like ripple scripts or something, aren't they? You know, like they're, kind of like when you... You know, like they're, kind of like when you get on the edge of the road, you know, it's kind of like that.
It's, and it's not, it goes beyond that. Generally, there, it involves curving, landscaping, tie-ins to your sidewalks, enhanced crosswalks at your intersections. It's, it's things that visually make the driver aware that they're in a neighborhood. And generally, while the lanes and the lights aren't actually reduced, if you design them to where it gives the impression visually that the lane is narrower than what they normally are, it generally reduces speeds, and so that would be the types of things that they would be looking at.
Good, that sounds good.
I just wanted to clarify, because I didn't, you know, the speed bumps are what they are.
Speed bumps are usually, worst-case scenario, after you've tried every other possible alternative, this is good.
Any more discussion? Motion to approve this STBG funding for the, what we're calling the Carter, Margrave, Carter Street project. Call the roll, please.
Ms. Ayler?
Yes.
My best?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Can you meet?
Yes.
Ken Minna?
Yes.
Monty Wright?
Yes.
Last item on the agenda is discuss and approve Rome County Emergency Communications Agreement 2016 through 17, is included in your package. Is there a motion to go ahead and approve?
I thought we just approved it.
I thought we just approved one a couple of months ago, too, thank you, Councilman Martin, but apparently we hadn't. Anybody else remember that?
Somebody came and talked to us about what it was going to raise, and what it was last year.
I thought it was a couple of months ago.
Hadn't been too long, though.
Yep, because I asked him about who our representative was on the committee and the board, because he said we could have, we had one vote.
Should put it on the table.
I know the, the request, the request for the representative came out of the budget last year. I think there may have been several months back in time before they came before the council to make the presentation, and because of the property tax situation last year, it was more like September when we did the budget, so I think it probably has been about six months or so since the representative came before you.
So have, have we approved one or not?
Apparently not.
Has it gone up?
It's, it's increased based upon the, the amount that was built into the original, I think it was a five-year agreement, so it's, I think it's 3% that it's gone up, and that's the amount that we anticipated. It's kind of odd, it says it may go up 3%, but we really don't have any discussion as does it go up 1%. That's their call, I guess.
Yeah.
I mean, it is.
They're going to use it, yeah. Oh, do we have a motion or a second? Is there a motion and a second to approve this agreement?
Motion.
A motion by Councilman Mead, is there a second? Second by Councilman Holly. Councilman Mead.
No, sir.
Councilman Holly. Floor is open for question or discussion.
I think we've been through it probably every year. We, we can't do it any cheaper than, than the past year. But as Ken said, it's going to tend to go up 3% every year.
This board also has an appointment that we need to fill, but I put it on the first agenda in September. Chief Bailey has offered up his interest in this seat, but they don't need it until after the first meeting in September. Is there any more discussion about this agreement? One-year agreement, it'll come back in a year. Call the roll, please.
Ms. Ayler?
Yes.
My best?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Can you meet?
Yes.
Ken Minna?
Yes.
Monty Wright?
Yes.
Before we adjourn, I'd like to ask for a motion to waive the agenda rule. I think going on an emergency, motion by Councilman Ayler, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Martin. All in favor of waiving the agenda rule, please vote with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? There's a repair that needs to be done out of the drug fund money, and Kevin can tell you more, Kenny can tell you more.
Yeah, yes, sir. It's a 2007 Nissan Pathfinder that belongs to the local narcotics officer. The transmission has gone out on it. Currently, we're very short of administrative vehicles. We're asking for up to $3,800 for the drug fund to repair the transmission on this vehicle.
Is there a motion to approve this purchase?
Motion.
Second. Motion by Councilman Ayler, second, by Councilman Martin. Councilman Ayler.
How many miles does that vehicle have on it?
It has around 150,000 miles.
I, I think this is, you know, we've talked a lot, this board has, about the right way to cycle through vehicles and to try to avoid this kind of scenario where the, the expense to fix something might be actually worth more than the vehicle itself. This may not be the situat, in that case, this situation, but, you know, I, I want to commend the efforts of the, of the police force to present to council a plan to prevent this kind of thing from happening, and I hope that whoever the new chief is continues with those efforts, because, you know, this kind of expense, I'd like to avoid it, to be perfectly honest.
Chief, is this a?
Let me get Councilman Martin first, I'm sorry, Councilman Wright, Councilman Martin.
What, Councilman Levis said?
Councilman Wright.
Is, is this just replacing the transmission?
Yes, sir, it is.
Are we doing it in-house, or?
No, sir. Our in-house, my understanding is they don't have to do it, do something this advance.
How long have we, how long have we had this vehicle on?
I think we've only had it for a couple of years. We paid around 10,000 to 12,000 for it. It currently has a Kelly Blue Book value of 7,000 to 9,000. I think when we, do you remember when we purchased that Jason? Was it a couple of years ago?
Year, year.
Year, year and a half ago. So I think it had over 100,000 miles that we got.
Were you good for Missouri?
No, sir. It's, it's an unmarked car over there. Yeah.
Other than transmission, no problems?
No, sir.
So you think it will last as good a while?
I think probably another, if we did this, I'm thinking, you know, 60, 70,000 more miles, put it below 200, but I think we could get that much out of it, because it being an undercover narcotics vehicle, it's not getting the same use that patrol vehicle would get.
What'd you say Kelly Blue Book was?
Uh, 7,000 to 9,000.
Then we'd probably get five without transmission, probably, right?
Yeah, probably.
Without transmission, you'd get eight.
Those are pretty durable vehicles.
So we're looking at eight to three more years out of it. I, I just look, it's, it's an old seven, and we're hitting almost 10 years on it.
Yes, sir. I'd say two to three.
What drug fund got in, you know?
I believe it's about 35,000, is that correct?
Does anybody know what we've got due coming to us?
We'd have to do some research on that. I've heard various amounts. I think we're anticipating about 30,000 this year, if I'm not mistaken.
Can we check on that and find that?
Yes, sir.
Any more discussion? This is a purchase to spend up to 3,000 and what?
About 3,800.
3,800 out of the drug fund, not out of the general fund, to repair the transmission on a Nissan Pathfinder. Any more discussion? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Ayler?
Yes.
My best?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Can you meet?
Yes.
Ken Minna?
Yes.
Monty Wright?
Yes.
Baby Boomers Night Out is August 25th at the Princess Theater. Good concert there. Farmer's Market's still open, Wednesdays and Saturdays. A pretty big deal coming up Thursday, if you haven't already voted, by the time they